And rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, can I get you to see if anybody signed up for open forum? Eric Lagnus.
Mayor and city council, Eric Lagnus, 9610-223rd Street, North Forest Lake, Minnesota, by 5025. I watched your most recent city council meeting live on cable and was further appalled by comments made by our mayor, Ben Winnick. You said you have a couple of issues with a couple of people and first singled me out specifically in my role as a planning commissioner. I highly suggest that you consult our city attorney before you make further disparaging comments about myself, other appointed members of our city boards, or staff in a public forum without notice to those who you wish to go on record as scolding.
It's the same thing you did to me, Eric, and I'm calling you out not as your duties as a planning commissioner, at the comments you made afterwards. And I'll be glad to talk to you about that anytime you want.
I'd like to finish with my three minutes. Furthermore, for someone that has recently demonstrated such an absence of courage, you've got a lot of nerve calling me a liar.
Don't call me an absence of courage.
Let me speak my three minutes.
No, I'm not going to give you that opportunity if you're just going to sit here and try to.
I'm going to clarify the record here.
Go right ahead.
And I'm going to make the record crystal clear for you, since you chose to tell lies about me in those few minutes. In fact, about all you got correct was that I'm a planning commissioner. First, you said that I called you out for your vote, which I most certainly did not do. In fact, during my comments in the planning commission, I specifically said that I respect that the particular children's mental health facility and associated tax amendment vote were the power of council and I respect its year decision. I made it crystal clear in my comments that I was appalled by the fact that you suggested the planning commission didn't do their job. Similarly, during the ongoing debate, you said the same of staff. At one point in a public meeting, telling them you wished they'd do their job. You then said, "I put it out on the internet," which is also a lie. An activist put it online, and while I certainly shared the video clip, it was not a production I created. You further went on to state that I put it on my own websites, which is also a lie. I own a single domain, eriklagnus.com, which I only use for my email. I suspect you were alluding to the Facebook social media page, Washington County Watchdog, which happens to be a page that I'm one of numerous moderators for, but certainly not the only one. In fact, the vast majority of its content on the page is not me. That said, those that run the page primarily wish to remain anonymous and we rarely ever share who creates specific posts. You do not know who posted on that page. You then said, "It's wrong, it's a cheap shot, and you know I'm upset you didn't appoint me to council." I've never said I was upset that you didn't appoint me, and in fact, I'm not upset about it. Do I find it disgusting that you chose someone specifically so they would vote your way on the upcoming tax amendment? Absolutely. It's infuriating to me that you chose to abuse power in such a fashion.
I never abused power, and that's not what it is. You're trying to put words in my mouth.
You then framed me as anti-business because I voted against expanding hours late into the night for an existing bar that's in the middle of a residential district. You must have fallen asleep during the comments section where I expressed positive comments about Aqua and said I was willing to expand their hours, but thought that the request went beyond what I felt was appropriate for the neighborhood. I'm both a strong proponent of business and our residents. You finished with.
Strong proponent of business, but yet when Menards wanted to, you wouldn't let them expand without a second drive.
Obviously, you didn't listen to that entire commentary I had either.
And when cell towers wanted to go off on personal property, you didn't allow that either?
If I could continue. If I could continue, this is supposed to be a public forum where you listen to the public.
I can listen to the public, but I'm not going to listen to lies and I'm not going to listen to somebody that's having a.
You're the one that's saying the lies, Mayor Winnick. You finished with a comment about me, that you didn't know how many other businesses I voted against, and that may be true. There's a lot you don't know. You suggested I called you without giving you an opportunity to be in attendance and respond. Well, at our next planning commission meeting, you showed up thinking you were the liaison, when in fact, just weeks prior, you appointed council member Bain to serve in that role. Maybe you should have shown up to fulfill the duty you thought you had. But even so, our planning commission has always welcomed our elected representatives to join in our public meetings where we transparently make decisions. For someone that has shown such cowardice behavior to our community in recent times, you've got a lot of nerve calling me a liar.
You're really pushing it, Eric. We'll see you sometime when you're not in here. We'll see you as a coward then, you piece of shit. No, that's, what he did is wrong.
That's over the line.
All of it was.
That's over the line.
Yep. All right. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, Eric, would you?
Yes, please.
Well, Mayor, one of eight members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. And before we get into the reason for our discussion this evening, I would be remiss if I didn't once again thank all of you for the support you have shown in the Mercer Group and in me particularly to assist you in this incredibly important recruitment that we are embarking on. So tonight, as I hope you've had the opportunity to glean from the memorandum I prepared, is an important step in that process. It's one of the preliminary steps, but nevertheless, an incredibly, at least from my perspective, incredibly important step because it will give us an opportunity to, after our conversation tonight, to at some point in the very near future finalize the content for a recruitment profile, which will be the major recruitment document that we will use in soliciting applications for your next city administrator. So as you noted from the memorandum, there are a number of questions that I have specifically for you to give me direction on this evening. And of course, there may be other things that you would like to have edited or changed or deleted, or whatever the case may be. It is your document, not mine. I've made my best first step or first draft attempt to, I think, put together what reflects not only the community, but the position and the priorities that you have identified, both in my conversations with you individually and from the materials and resource information that I've had access to over the last few weeks. But there's no pride in authorship here. It is your document and I'm looking for your direction. As you note from the memorandum as well, the other piece of the process that is discussed in here concerns the interview process, both for what I've called semifinalist as a way to distinguish them from the people that will ultimately become finalists, that you will interview, the four, five, six, however many that number turns out to be, that will be identified as finalists. Well, while those questions are listed in this memorandum this evening, I would say it's not as important that they be resolved tonight. That may be a discussion that you want to have with your city attorney, or maybe one that you want to have as a council at a date in the coming weeks. But I think before, obviously, before we get to the end of the recruitment process, we'll have to have clarity on how it is we're going to proceed, both with semifinalist interviews, if that's to occur, and then ultimately the process for interview with finalists. They're, for sake of convenience, they're outlined, the recommendations or the options are outlined in this memorandum. But again, I want to emphasize that it's not imperative that they, some of those questions with respect to process be resolved. Again, for this evening, my primary interest is in the recruitment profile. So at that, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I'll stop and answer any questions you might have before we get into the content. I'll also say that we have a copy of the South St. Paul recruitment profile that is loaded, that you can see on your screen if you're interested in it. Dan tells me that you have seen that previously, and that was a companion document to the proposal I gave you back in April. So I'm not going to go through it unless you want to. But if there's questions about what the final document might look like, obviously, the content will be very different and the layout will be somewhat different. But it'll give you a good idea of what you can expect from the final document.
Well, Jim, thank you. I think, you know, I was going through it. I thought it was very thorough. I think, you know, it identified, and, you know, just going through it, I could see, you know, different views from the council here, you know. So it isn't just a, you know, for me, it isn't just a generic document that you did. But I think you really did listen to, you know, what we were as a group asking for. Couple of questions, though. You've done this a lot more than we have.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah. You're going to come across candidates that are extremely well qualified, but they might not quite hit what we're looking for.
Right.
But, you know, I'm kind of torn at that point because, you know, I'd also like to, you know, I mean, if there's that, you know, really good candidate, but yet, you know, we're looking for the X, Y, or Z, and they're, you know, X, Y, and A, are you going to forward some like that? Or are you using just our qualifications as a complete yes or no package?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I think that's a very good question because I think sometimes a review process like this can be too literal. It can be too focused on what the criteria are. They are important. And certainly, in order to focus attention on this position, you have to start somewhere and you have to say, here are what we are looking for. That said, perhaps the biggest, I don't know that mistake is the right word because that's a little bit too strong. But I think the biggest error that sometimes can be made when people are doing this, that haven't made this kind of decision for a long time, or maybe never, is to get too focused on a candidate's education, on a candidate's experience, where that was, years of experience, and so forth. And as I've tried to indicate in this report, that is important, it clearly is. But hopefully, by the time we get through the review process or the application process, the people that you're going to be looking at are all going to be qualified in one way or another for this position. And to satisfy the concern that you have, I hope this does anyway, you will get a report from me that has at least some explanation of the background of all of the candidates. As I mentioned in the report, assuming we get an adequate number of applications, my intent would be to divide those applications into three categories, those that I think are most qualified and ones that I have had phone interviews with, a middle group that I think are intriguing. And to your point, Mayor, that may be the group that, for whatever reason, comes up short on one of the application or the recruitment criteria, but seems to have a really interesting background in another area. I can think of one candidate, for example, from a previous recruitment, who had a really very, very strong marketing background. Also had a governmental background, but didn't have the years of experience as a city administrator that some of the other candidates had. So I'm hopeful it's a long-winded answer to your question, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to give you enough information that you'll be able to ask questions of candidates that may intrigue you, that I didn't see. And hopefully, I'm going to be broad enough in my examination of the applications to make sure that you get a variety of people to look at.
All right, yeah, that was a great answer, so appreciate that. Open up the council for any questions or comments.
I do have a question. I think there was some concern whether we should expand the search nationally.
My intent right now, Councilmember Eigner, is to do that. Our normal process would be to undertake a national recruitment. And honestly, I would encourage you to do that. I think it will ultimately benefit you to have a greater number of applicants to look at. I'm not a person who believes that experience in Minnesota makes a candidate superior to another candidate necessarily. I think it can be important. I think it's of value, certainly. But I think it's too myopic to exclude people who might otherwise be an ideal candidate for you. And so I would recommend you do a national recruitment, but that certainly is your call.
And then in your experience, and especially if you recruited in the state of Minnesota, do you find a trend or a timeline that the same names keep coming up as they choose to advance? Or is that not the case?
It is and it isn't. There are, I'm, I would believe that with this recruitment, given the timing of it, I'm going to see some applications from people who recently applied to South St. Paul, for example, which was the most recruitment, or the most recent recruitment that I was working on. That said, it's not going to be an identical list by any measure. I think the communities are different enough. I think we're going to see a different pool, but there will be some common applications. And I can tell you, in fact, that there are a couple of people that were in that pool that I didn't necessarily think were perhaps best suited for a South St. Paul that might be more attractive for this kind of community. So, you know, we'll have to see, but I'm guessing we'll see some of the same people.
My final question is, do you have, do you have other recruiters that are referring candidates to you?
Yes, we do. We've got about 15 or so people like me around the country that work pretty much regionally on recruitments like this. And when we get the recruitment profile approved, I will be sending it to all of the people that are in our network as well. And a couple in particular that I have a good relationship with and trust their judgment to say, do you have anybody that might be worth contacting that either you or I can get a hold of to encourage them to apply? And that generally works to generate maybe one or two applications in a recruitment like this, I would say.
Thank you.
Now, if we want to bring forward a council nominee as well, or a candidate, is that something that can be included or tied in with through?
Mr. Mayor, certainly the recruitment process will be open to anyone that wishes to apply. And if there are people that you or members of the council feel would be good applicants, I would suggest that you have them, either just send me the application material or have them contact me. They can, and we can talk about the position and I can certainly help them with the recruitment process.
Okay. Any other questions from? I think I got one more for.
Sure.
Is there, can we have some type of requirement within this recruitment or this position that whoever is hired must live within a certain radius or distance of? Forest Lake, I mean, I don't think we can say you have to live in Forest Lake, but, you know, if they're 30 miles away now and commuting every day or whatever, I just don't, you know, I'm questioning that.
Mr. Mayor, you're, I know you're correct about the requirement to live within the community. You cannot do that. I'm less certain about how the law applies. I know that there's a requirement in, or there's a provision in the law that says if there is a job-related reason for the person to be within proximity, whatever that turns out to be, that that's permissible. But without doing some additional research, and actually, I think would be something the city attorney ought to give you an opinion on, rather than me, when we get to that point. And I would say that that's a question when, you know, when we get down the road a little bit further and we see the applicants that you have, because there may be an absolutely stellar candidate that all of you think is exactly the right person, and he or she may not be as close to some of the other candidates. So I think it would be maybe unnecessary early on to, you know, say that this is something, a requirement for people, but.
I had one concern in the packet for de-invitation for administrator. Under major initiatives for the future, I think the first two bullet points, organizational assessment and team building are pretty spot on. I kind of feel the language could be interpreted to say that there's a problem with staff or, say, morale's in peril. I said it's spot on as far as the content. I think the delivery might kind of shy somebody away, thinking that there's a turmoil here. I'd like to see the council's take on it. Maybe it's just the way I read it. Maybe we work a little more friendly. So we're on page 17, under major initiatives for the future, the first two bullet points. I just don't want it to feel like a threatening situation someone would be walking into. But the content is very inclusive.
Well, and it gets at a little bit of the dilemma I had in trying to make sure that I prepared an honest document.
I appreciate that.
Because it does no good for anyone's purpose, I think, to try and deceive people and say, you know, there aren't issues. We all know that there are. But what I've tried to do, and perhaps maybe not as eloquently as it can be stated, is to let people know that some of the issues that they may be aware of or they may come across in their individual reviews of background materials are, what they're going to find is it's more issue-related and it's not, it's not related to the city administrator position, for example. And that, that is a really important point because in many communities where there has been, let's say, significant council turnover or community issues for the last several years, oftentimes, the city administrator is at the focal point of that. And rightly or wrongly, the city administrator becomes kind of the personification of those issues. I've tried to at least indicate in here that that isn't the case, based on what I heard in talking to you and to others. But again, I'm open if there's a better way to state any of this. But I'm trying to get that balance between not trying to be deceptive because that doesn't go very far in today's age, anyway. Plus, it's not something I'd want to do.
I think everything you have in there needs to be stated. Definitely want to be honest, not hide anything, but.
Just the positioning. It's in as number two, and maybe I've, you know, just look at this list and context to your feedback. Organizational assessment, absolutely. Smart growth, absolutely. Code structure, absolutely. And I think somebody who's going to be a skilled administrator is going to, it's part, team building goes with leadership, right? And we have other points in here where we're talking about strong leadership skills that I don't know if it needs the same call-out that we have in the other items as major initiatives. It also kind of goes as part of the organizational assessment, right? So a skilled administrator will come in, do an assessment, and they will diagnose what the right next steps are based on what that looks like and.
So maybe we could include a sentence in that first bullet and get away from having that second bullet is.
I.
Could that be redundant?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, morale is definitely a priority from my perspective. You know, the employees need to be valued, and people being kept out of the loop is one of those things that degrades morale. So it's important to keep it in there. But when I read through those first two, you know, I tried to put myself in position, if I were applying for that job, how would I feel? And I kind of threw a flag saying, maybe there's some turmoil there, something I wouldn't want to step into. So I hope that's not the case here. I haven't heard it has. But just to kind of put that second thought to ease, if somebody was going, what am I walking into?
I can certainly do that if that's your desire. Okay.
Yeah, I think that was a good point. Timetable.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that this is about as thorough as I'd whatever expect, you know, the qualifications and this is a learning experience for me, certainly, and I sure appreciate all that you've done on this thing. And I think it's dead on accurate, so.
Thank you.
Time cable, you know, it's taken us quite a while to get to this point. And, you know, hopefully, we can see an expedited process from here. But, you know, what's your realistic expectations for?
Normally, once this, and it sounds like we may be able to get this, the text of this approved this week, we, if that turns out to be true after our discussion this evening, it will go to our graphics person, who will do the design for the brochure, similar to what you saw for South St. Paul. That only takes a few days at the most. So it's conceivable that if we get approval tonight or tomorrow, we could have that by, if not by Friday, certainly, right after Memorial Day. And once that is done, and then we can begin to place ads, and we'll do that the very same, very same day. Once ads are placed, it normally, my comfort level is to have about five weeks. And honestly, I think in this case, because we may need to actually be doing a lot more work trying to get people to consider what a good opportunity this can be, I'd rather err on having it seem to be a week too long, rather than a week too short. But that said, we've also worded the recruitment profile in a way to say that the first review of job applications will begin, I think we said on June 29th. I'd have to go back and look, but that's about right. That doesn't mean that we're closing applications, and if applications come in after that, you would certainly be aware of it, and if you wanted to consider them in the process, we can. So it's a little bit of an iterative process, but it would be about a five-week process with the goal right now of trying to have the first review, my review of the applications, to be completed by the end of June.
This approval process, to approve what he's doing, how are we going to work through that with being it's a workshop and not a voting meeting? I mean, how do we handle that?
I think if we have a good consensus, he can go forward and we can approve it at the next meeting.
Kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, correct. You actually don't technically need a motion to approve it, as long as he's got direction. The text is good enough. That's basically brought it forward, just to get council feedback and make sure you guys are okay with the text that's there. And if he's not hearing that there's any major sticking points on there, we can release as proceeded there without having to bring it back for the formal motion.
The question I had is, you mentioned that after your review, are you a review of one? Or do you have a board or other people working for you that will review these candidates?
It's me. If there are candidates that I'm, that I have questions about, I will send it out to the network of other people that work for the firm and say, have any of you encountered this person, if they're not people that I know? So I will get some feedback that way. And sometimes that's been very helpful.
That was going to be my second question as to what network you had out there for people that are already working in that position?
It's, given my, the experience that I've had working in Minnesota for so many years, I will know most of the Minnesota candidates, I think, that are going to apply. And if not, I can find out very quickly from people that I network with. On a national level, it gets to be a little bit more difficult, but I also have a lot of contacts nationally that I can use.
That was my question as to whether or not you were at a larger screening network, and obviously, you do. Thank you.
I think you did an excellent job on the profile and getting, kind of pulling together consensus from the sources used. One of the things I think you were looking for feedback on was ad placement, and you talked a little bit about the national search.
Right.
My thought is, you know best the ponds you need to be fishing in, and so I would, you know, use what you would typically use for a profile like us. I mean, I don't have a need to kind of cherry pick your list. You know the pool. That's my opinion.
All right.
And again, the question about interview process, I think is something that can wait. It's something you may want to kind of noodle individually and collectively and think about as we, as we go through the recruitment process. But at some point, we'll have to have some clarity about how you want to proceed, both in defining semifinalists or finalists for the process. And that is a conversation you're probably going to want to have with your city attorney as well about the conflict, well, not the conflict, but the interaction between the Data Practices Act and the open meeting law. Because they, they're both excellent laws, but when it comes to the application process, when about, for semifinalists, they create some inconsistencies that you need to work around.
The other question, and it's not so much for you, but it's for the council. If you should find a candidate outside of Minnesota, or wherever in the United States, how do we, do we pay for that candidate to fly in, or how is that handled? And maybe, Dan, you can shed some light on that.
I believe typically in the past, we have paid for travel for finalists to come in. I'd have to go back and verify that, but I know for sure hotel stays, if they've come in and had to stay overnight for a two-day interview process, we've arranged for hotel stays in here. And I believe if, throughout state coming in, you also would pay for travel expenses. And I believe if throughout state coming in, you also would pay for travel expenses to get here for the interview process.
Depending on the process that you ultimately settle on for the semifinalist, what I would, if you're going to do interviews with a group of semifinalists, which would be eight people to 10 people perhaps, my recommendation at that point to you will be to do a video interview with them, with all of them, whether they're from Minnesota or whether they're from Connecticut, so that they're all treated equally and you have the same kind of interaction. Granted, it's not perfect, but it does give you at least kind of a semi-personal contact with these people. And it minimizes the cost as well. But once you get to the finalist stage, I think it's absolutely critical that you have everybody here that you're considering. It would be very unusual for a city not to pay for finalists to come and interview with you.
That's what I was going to clarify too, was I thought, you know.
I mean, I would think we would, but I just want to be sure.
At the semifinalist stage.
I want to be sure that we're all on board with that.
At the semifinalist stage, I would rather do some type of video or teleconference interview with the candidates and, you know, bring them all here for that point anyway.
Especially if it keeps the level playing field.
Right. Okay.
Do you need anything further from us?
No, I don't think so. I think I have what I need so far and I appreciate the feedback. And I'm excited about this. Well, thank you. Thank you. No, I think, I think it's going to be a good recruitment. I think you'll, you'll be happy with, with the candidates.
Do you have an anticipated number of candidates you think you'll see?
You know, I knew I'd get that question because I always do. And I thought, well, I'll really say maybe three or four. And then when you get 30 or 40, you'll be. Realistically, I would, I would hope we get at least 30 to maybe 40 on the, if we exceed 40, that would be really, really good. That's kind of what the market is right now.
Well, that's overall applicants or qualified applicants?
That's overall. I would say you're probably going to be looking at maybe 15 candidates that you might want to be considering, 15 to 20 if we're in the 30 to 40 range, something like that. But it, it does vary and it's hard to give you a number. But that's kind of what I would expect at this point.
I do have one last question. As these candidates, do you have some kind of these criteria? Do you weight them? Or how do you select in your own mind?
It's a, it's a combination of kind of the checklist. Do they meet the, the basic qualifications? And then it's based on the materials that they've submitted. My assessment of the experiences that they've had, my phone conversations with them. I don't talk to all of the candidates. If it's clear that they're not a candidate that I think has anything really to offer that you would want to consider, I'm not going to spend a half hour, hour on the phone with, with every, with every candidate. But it's both my judgment and my assessment of what they've submitted in terms of how they meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you.
One last question from me. You've done this a lot more than we have. Is there anything you think we should add to this?
No, sir, I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
I don't.
Any other questions?
No, I'm done. Well, thank you again. Look forward to working with you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Dan, do you want to take us through the joint powers?
Yeah, may I, members of council? With Scandia fully withdrawing from the joint powers agreement for the cable commission, there is a need to take a look at that document and make any changes. At this point, to basically revise the joint powers agreement to reflect that Scandia is no longer in there. This can be done either through a complete rewrite of the joint powers agreement or just through an amendment to the joint powers agreement. Kind of before we get into the conversation here, I did have a conversation this afternoon with Bridget. Asked her a couple of questions on some clarifying aspects of the joint powers agreement. So once Scandia withdraws at June 30th, we still have a joint powers agreement. And our joint powers agreement still will be valid. However, she reviewed it over the weekend. I reviewed it over the weekend. We both are kind of strongly in the position of it should be updated to reflect that Scandia is no longer in there. But it's not like a, we need to get this taken care of by the end of June. So we can take the time that we need to do this right to get this joint powers agreement updated. The first section that I do highlight as needing to be updated would be the eligible member sections, which is section five. At this point, I'm going to recommend putting this one on hold. Bridget reviewed the, the makeup of the joint powers as dictated by state statute. And there may be a state statute overarching that basically sets the fact that each member can only appoint two members to the commission. So she's not sure that that's the actual, you know, that is what we have to set our board up to or not. So basically, at this point, we may be stuck with that four-member board just because we only have two members, which are the mega quorum. Everybody has to be there for every meeting, which could potentially make quorum issues difficult. However, if we're able to appoint the fifth member, then we could switch the quorum to a majority, which would make it a little more flexibility in terms of making the quorum for meetings. However, I, I kind of told it and I said, we kind of would take that, put it on the table until we get clarification as to whether or not we're able to kind of set the makeup of the cable commission or if it's mandated by state statute. So we're currently reviewing that. But a couple of the issues that have come up that will need to be addressed in the new revision is, one is for who is able to perform the accounting work for the commission. The current joint powers agreement says that one of the member bodies has to be the group that does the accounting work for the commission. Forest Lake has done it or had done it in the past for a number of years. Columbus has done it for a number of years. Scandia is currently performing that work. And the cable commission has basically got entered into an agreement with Scandia to continue on doing that work once they're beyond, once they withdraw. At this, it's at the, at this point, basically, the city of Forest Lake and the city of Columbus have basically kind of said, advise the cable commission to find another source to do the books just because of the extra time requirement for, to have the cable commission's finances taken care of. We just don't have capacity, either Columbus or Forest Lake, kind of given our financial staff situations, to kind of take on a whole nother set of books to maintain. That being said, Scandia is currently able to do it. We do have an agreement within that able to continue on doing that after Scandia withdraws. However, we would need to update the JPA to allow that to happen. And in the event that Scandia then, let's say, you know, a year from now decides, you know what? We don't want to do these books either. We would then be able to find a qualified accounting firm to do that work, to do the books for Scandia, or excuse me, for the cable commission. They're not overly complicated. However, there is some time involved in managing and making sure that the accounting is done correctly for the, for the cable commission. The cable commission, as they've kind of gone through some of the audit language, gone through the audit process, has basically made the request that they, we make a change to the audit requirement that's currently in the JPA. Right now, it basically states every two years, the board needs to go through or the books need to be audited by an approved accounting firm. The cable commission has basically, they don't want to, they feel they don't want to pay for the, as a budget savings, pay for an audit every two years versus they want to go through, if they hit the threshold set by the state auditor to mandate an audit, let that one be the trigger as long as they have the approved financial policies in place that are reviewed at a more frequent basis. This is one where you can kind of see both sides of the argument. With the current makeup of the cable commission, I think a two-year audit, you know, was, you could probably slide that a little bit. They're, they're in a good financial position. They've had good, made good financial decisions recently. However, you change board composition over five years, a lot of damage can be done to an organization's books if you don't have an audit that happens in five years. So the recommendation at this point for myself would be to maintain that two-year audit threshold, even though there's a cost associated with it, just to make sure that everything is done, you know, above board. However, you could alleviate that and kind of make that, once they hit a certain budget threshold, I think right now it's somewhere in the ballpark of like 220,000-ish. Don't quote me, that number kind of changes every year. But once their operating budget hits that number, then it automatically triggers a, an audit. They're bumping right below that right now. I mean, they're like basically just below that threshold. So you could go either way on it. However, you know, just from a strong, financial management perspective, it's probably good to maintain a two-year audit, you know, as part of the joint powers association. Because if there are any problems in the way the finances are managed, you'll be able to catch them early and address them before you kind of get too far down, you know, a potential problem. And you can kind of head it off at the pass for that. Basically, this item is brought forward just to kind of take a look at, you know, if there's any other items council would like to see as we kind of go through the revised JPA process. I guess partially, the way this will work is, this is kind of a joint negotiation at this point between this Forest Lake City Council and the city of Columbus as well. So we need to get buy-in from the city of Columbus. So, you know, we're just kind of looking at, kind of having the initial conversation on, you know, what needs to be done there. Bridget basically was looking at some of more of a housekeeping type thing, just eliminating the fact that Scandia is referenced a few times in the joint powers. Is there anything else that we want to, you know, address at this time when we have the JPA open or kind of going through the process? So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, you know, look for any feedback on the current JPA.
Would you have something, Ed?
Yeah, I'd just be in agreement with what Dan said as far as keeping the audit at a two-year interval. I know that in the case of the parks with Fenway Parks and Flaw, we got astray there pretty quick. Nobody was doing anything, city or on either side. So I like the idea of keeping it at two years. And I don't, it is, this cost would, for an outside firm to do the financials, that would be, that cost would be borne between Columbus and us.
The cable commission actually pays for the audits. So they have, they have a standing line. So yeah, the franchise fees that are contributed to the cable commission then get brought back and paid for the audit.
I'd rather just outsource it and keep it at a two-year interval.
The fees, the fees. I don't have the fees quoted by Scandia in my back pocket, but it was minimal. Like we, to go to a complete external firm would be a substantial jump. And so to keep them with Scandia seemed like an obvious choice if they were available and willing to continue to perform.
I'm going to address a few things here. First, the audit. It sounds like a great idea to do it every two years, but it's extremely expensive. I think it's in the eight to 10 to $12,000 range. And for, you know, a commission that's revenue is 150,000, I mean, it's ridiculous to spend 10% to audit. I would suggest that maybe wording it different because an audit is a full-blown financial review by, you know, a licensed CPA auditing firm. We could have an independent review of their books, something like that. We, we could word it differently where, you know, for $1,000, $2,000, we could have a CPA look for any irregularities within that rather than doing that full-blown audit. So that, that's where, you know, that wordsmithing is going to come in.
I was, I was just going to say, the, the challenge of moving away from an audit from other, every two years to something that's off-cycle is they have to do a comparative audit. And so if you wanted to do it every five years, they essentially have to re-audit everything anyway. So the path that you are heading down is a better path of some sort of agreed-upon procedures. Or they could do a, they could do a lesser report that is less expensive, less extensive. And then also, in this case, we have, I think that you'd want the wording of the joint powers to be worded that as long as the actual finance activities are on a contract basis outside of the cable commission staff itself, then you've got some assurances. You have independence just by, you've created a contractual difference that helps with the control structure. So, yeah.
So a couple more things. The PEG fees, public education and government fees are a bigger portion of that budget than their actual operating fees. So maybe we could look at separating out the PEG fees, bringing that within the remaining communities for them to use rather than leaving it in the JPA. I, I'm throwing out there as, as a potential. If we're worried about fraud or whatever, let's bring it back in here where it's getting in its own bucket in our accounting system, a potential. I, I'm okay either way and I'd like to see a lot of that revenue going to the schools to help develop some programs. But it's, it's a talking point we should look at as we go ahead. And the last two are kind of the, the same. You know, we can amend this agreement, but we may possibly want to look at a couple of other things in it. As we move in the future, what about adding members? What if Scandia wants to come back in or Wyoming or, you know, as the area increases? So maybe we have that wording in this JPA already. And just one more thing along that line is, instead of being the cable commission and being strung only with that cable component, maybe it's time to make this a media commission, something, to, to be able to deal with changes in the future rather than just, we've got this one focus on this cable that is kind of slowly going away. So those are my thoughts as we move forward. We're going to spend money if we have to redo this. Let's see if it's possible to do it, you know, make it better. But if it's going to get too expensive, I, I think what the cable commission is doing, and I mean, I have my full faith and confidence in, they're doing it right and doing it frugally. So I'm okay either way, but if, if we have the opportunity, you know, let's look at trying to improve that. Anything else?
I did have a, it's more of a point of clarification on wrapping up Scandia. Dan, I'm, I'll just, I'm questioning, we went, I went through the JPA. It talks about withdrawing members and what assets would potentially go back to the withdrawing member. And it seems like it's pretty clear it's anything that's in their city hall or city council chambers for broadcast of meetings. But then we go through a lo, really long discussion of fair market value of assets. And because it also talks about future sale and what that would, and I think we just need to crisp up in the next month or so, not necessarily at this body, but just as staff. And then with the, I guess, ultimately, it's our city council and Scandia and Columbus's city councils on what that, just making sure everyone's crisp on what that looks like.
Yeah, and I believe that you're referring to in terms of the future sales of asset would be if it was, let's say the cable commission owned a building that they were broadcasting out of that was worth $200,000 that Scandia made contributions to. When that building would be sold after withdrawal, they'd be entitled to their portion of the asset for that. Well, the cable commission's in a rental situation right now. So I think when we looked at it before, I think that's where we, the original assumption was it was all equipment. And then I think it was tied to real, I think there was a clarifier that said it was real estate related.
Okay.
So it was basically property values, not necessarily camera equipment.
So really, the confirmation that needs to be made is we need to confirm that there's no property that would need to go underneath a valuation process as part of their exit.
Correct, yeah. Because I believe, I mean, the cable commission does not own any property. They, they are current, they were in a rental situation before and they're currently in a rental situation, so.
How much, how much revenue would the cable commission lose by them pulling out, if any?
It's very minimal, isn't it?
They lost in 10% of subscribers, I believe.
Yeah, I want to say.
But that percentage is gone, right?
Yes, that would leave.
It was in the ballpark. I want to say, I mean, this is a really rough number off the top of my head. Someone in the ballpark of maybe $15,000 a year to operating, give or take. And we actually, when we ran the budget for this year, we actually anticipated them leaving in June. So we readjusted the budget numbers. So we had, kind of did all the tough cuts this year. The next year, we're already teed up on a very conservative budget. So even if subscribers continue to decline, they're already kind of already to adjust for that decline in subscribership and decline in revenue. So the Scandia withdrawal was already pretty much, has already been kind of absorbed in their budget. But it wasn't, you know, if you look at the subscriber base, Forest Lake definitely contributes the most to their budget annually.
So part of Scandia's leaving the cable commission was not mid-continent, but they have another provider.
Frontier.
Frontier. So, I mean, Frontier isn't bound by any agreements within this cable commission. What happens if we have, you know, Comcast or somebody else come into town? Are they obligated to go by the franchise fees and everything that we have and to pay this or?
Yeah, I believe they would fall under the franchise fee. Because there's two, there's a franchise fee ordinance that sets the fees that the subscribers pay. And then those, then there's the JPA that sets how those fees are managed, which establishes the cable commission. So if a new subscriber comes in or new company comes in, I believe you'd have to take a look at that overarching franchise fee agreement to see if they can negotiate in or they have to set up new. I don't know that for sure without actually reviewing that document to see what the pathways are for that. But the cable commission kind of operates as, instead of the city managing the funds, we basically defer that to the cable commission. They get the budget in August, we review it to make sure, yeah, where they're spending it appropriately. And then they're charged with actually executing that budget.
Well, that's where the accountability comes in. That's, you know, what, what I was alluding to and Ed was alluding to too. Whatever it takes for that accountability, that's what it wants to. If it's a full-blown audit or, or something, we could just do it annually with a CPA, you know, so.
I think also as part of the budget cycle, you had mentioned PEG fees. And I think as part of the budget cycle this year, you'll see that.
and I think as part of the budget cycle this year, you'll see that others, especially now that the Columbus city council chambers, the funding of that equipment has been done, you'll start to see a, a kind of evolution or a movement of those PEG fees to be more in-school programming or e, equipment to support programming related to schools and education. So you'll see that come through, whether we keep those PEG fees with the Cable Commission or whether we were to take them to the internal cities, it might end up being just a wash. Because I think strategically, you'll see that that's where the future direction's gonna go. We did need to get Columbus fully equipment, that equipment completed though, before you can make that move, so.
And the PEG fees too are also pretty much, there's only, there's certain items that they can be spent on. I mean, they're pretty restricted in terms of what they can be spent, they can't be used to cover operating expenses of the Cable Commission, they can't be used to pay wages and benefits. It's basically equipment and anything that's done for production. And in the last franchise fee agreement, the Cable Commission at the time established that their priority was ca, franchise fee increases. So if you look at the Cable Commission, it's pretty rich in franchise fee increases at the expense of, or excuse me, PEG fee increases versus franchise fees, so I mean, it's almost like there's more revenues that are gonna be generated as franchise fees versus, excuse me, PEG fees versus franchise fees moving forward, so. They're gonna be able to get a lot of equipment, which we'll be able to use in, for school investments, and, you know, upgrading at some point, the equipment that's in here will need to be replaced, you know, as it ages out, so there'll be fund balance available for that as well, and same thing in Columbus.
So with the PEG fees that accumulates in its own fund, is there a timetable that they have to be utilized with?
As long as they're being spent, they're trying to, so that, what has happened in the, with the budget of the Cable Commission was before, a lot of that stuff kinda co-mingled, you know, they've got their total budget at the bottom of the line item. A couple of years ago, when I worked with the Cable Commission on their budget, we separated those out and segmented it out and said, here's your PEG revenue fund and here's your operating fund, keep them separate. So they now separated it out, and then last year, we actually set them up on a CIP, kind of a a loose CIP plan based on what they were doing in the past, where they were actually taking these PEG revenues and actually making investments, so they weren't just going out and buying the next shiny computer, the next camera. They were actually on a projection too, if they wanted to go full HD in five years, they were making the investment that would be, so they had the capital available to make that investment. But they are at this point accumulating in a fund. The Cable Commission, I believe at some point in the near future, will kind of establish a policy for what do they wanna maintain for minimum fund balance in there, because it's pretty easy to, even though you could have a hundred thousand dollars in that a fund, just outfitting one council chamber, it can cost upwards of eighty thousand dollars, so you can go pretty quick. So you wanna make sure that you have enough there to cover candidates to get replaced, or if there's new technology that comes out that will assist with broadcasting, that there's enough fund balancer to make that investment at the time.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's move on. Dan, you wanna take us through the nineteen budget process?
Yep, mayors of council, it's getting to be that time of year again where you're gonna start dusting off the budget spreadsheets and, and get looking at the twenty nineteen budget process. Basically, this is on the agenda for tonight, just to kinda give you, everybody, an overview of what the process will look like, kinda get some dates out there. And then, we're looking at this point in time too, just to get any feedback council may have, or what are some of the priorities that you guys want to see included in the nineteen, nineteen budget? If there's any specific initiatives or anything else you wanna start pricing out, so we can get those figured out or in advance of kinda getting down to the actual points we're actually making, to having, you know, more finer level detailed discussions on them at a future meeting. Looking at the process for nineteen, it's gonna be pretty similar to the process that we've done in the past year, where tonight, we're just basically grabbing, you know, trying to get feedback on what are the drivers for the nineteen budget. I'll take those back, work with finance staff and department heads to kind of start putting out some rough numbers to that, and then we'll kind of bring back just kind of an update back at the June workshop, get it back on the radar screen in June, so you'll hear a little bit more kind of where we are to date with that. We're still, just from a staff and, you know, from an operational perspective, still pretty early on in the process. We're just starting to get the spreadsheets released, so we haven't really got a lot of feedback yet in terms of, you know, what eighteen, or excuse me, what's eighteen's looking like, you know, we're still kinda looking at where we are with our current budget, looking at future projections. We're early on in the process, we don't have a lot of hard and fast numbers at this point, more kinda just, kinda moving targets. Once we bring it back from the June workshop, we'll kinda go back then and really start to put down, drill down those, those numbers, try to get some actual numbers that'll get brought forward. At this point, looking at the third week in Ju, July for a finance committee review, same process we did last year, finance committee kinda reviews it, takes a look at what's kinda fleshed out to the top, what are the main drivers, if there's gonna be any increases in, you know, budget numbers and any other specific, you know, portion of the budget, why are those increases there? Any decreases, why are they there? Again, gets feedback from the finance committee, are kind of feeling okay with the budget, do I make some substantial changes? And then we'll go back into the August city council budget workshops. Again, we have four of those scheduled for August, the eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth. Again, those are kind of where all the, you know, most of the hammering out of the budget will occur. The first one's usually on general fund, and I believe the second two are on the enterprise fund, the sewer and water fund, will be discussed at a second two. Historically, we've never really used all four of them, we keep them on the calendars in case we do need to use all four. I think in the past, there's one, we've had three, when we had two year, you know, two meetings. When we get through the August workshop, we'll go back then, and then it's September tenth meeting that will bring forward the proposed budget, we'll, we'll set the preliminary levy numbers at that point. Again, that'll set the highest levy, the highest point that we can levy for, we can always reduce that from September through December. And then at the December third, we'll have the public hearings and adopt the twenty nineteen budget. So I guess at this point, we're just looking for, again, like I said before, any, if there's any specific priorities, issues, or services you want staff to evaluate between now and, you know, as we get into the budget process. It's a good point for us to do it now, we're able to take those back and start doing some costing and start to take a look at where would this fit within the budget, you know, how can it get us to fit, so. At this point, it's kinda looking for any high-level feedback, or, you know, what are the priorities for nineteen?
I'll kick it off. I guess, you know, I would like to see the budget held as close to zero increase as possible. We added in some money for assisting changing from blacktop to, or from dirt to asphalt for roads, and I believe we were going to try to continue to fund that every year till we, till we hit a specific level and maintain that. So that will affect our overall budget. I think the city micro-manages too much in our accounting process. I don't think we need to have a separate fund for shovels and a separate fund for brooms, and, you know, I, I, I think we have directors of these departments that do a really good job. I got a lot of faith that they're spending the money properly. So I would like to see a little more simplified accounting system sometimes for them. That may not happen this year, but I'd like that to be our goal, is, you know, to, to acknowledge that, you know, our, our department heads have their budgets and can maintain that without trying to shuffle that money around from one bucket to the other all, all year long. And to go along with that, if they don't spend that money, I know because of laws, everything else, we can't leave it in there, but some type of placeholder or something else that we can acknowledge, you know, if, 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 if they just didn't need to spend that money, there's no reason to spend it by the end of the year, but that, you know, that additional money is a placeholder for the next year's budget, or, you know, one-time purchases, things like that. And I don't know how that can get worked in, but there's gotta be, you know, some type of way to acknowledge that, you know, when, when somebody's running that department efficiently and they didn't spend everything in their budget, that, you know, that doesn't just disappear and we cut their budget the next year and, and never give that back to them again. You know, I think the only other thing, and because I heard it so often when Councilman Prer was here, the kind of budget for depreciation, for wear and tear, whether it's on this building or, you know, any of the assets we have, but we don't have any monies building up for the eventual need to put roofs and redo asphalt and, and different things like that. And we should really start looking at that. Everything's getting older, there's gonna be a need to fix those sooner or later.
Just out of curiosity, what's the dollar amount departments can spend without having council approval?
I'd have to take a look, I believe if it's budgeted, if the line item is budgeted, I wanna say it's up to, I think it's, I think current policy is fifty thousand, but that's assuming it's budgeted, or if it's, you know, so let's say you're looking at a replacement truck, and the truck budget is fifty thousand and the estimate comes in at forty-five, I believe current fiscal policy would say that the department head could just authorize the purchase, since this is already a pre, that's assuming again it's pre, you know, it's a pre-approved budgetary expense. I'd have to go back to the policy to confirm the number, but that's sticking out in my head is what the number, the threshold is, but I can confirm that for you.
What about non-budgeted items?
In terms of, like, slump breaks.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different examples, one you could use is say, you have an item next year, it's budgeted, small item, the one you have breaks down, and instead of, you know, it's something you need to get by, instead of putting money into repair or something that should have been replaced or will be next year, can they just go ahead, or?
If it's within their current budget, like, so like, an example would be like, you know, in the IT budget, for example, we got a request for, we had to replace all the Wi-Fi access points in the, in the building. A total cost of around approximately seven thousand, the end of life, you know, they were no longer resourced, so we had to keep all those access points going, so we looked at the budget, they said, well, you can do this in eighteen. However, they got a really good price on them, in seventeen, they found a, you know, like, a third the price or whatever it was, so. I authorized a purchase in seventeen, it was pre-budgeted, I didn't go over the budgetary amount, you know, at that point, it was basically that. But it came at the expense, I made the decision, get the wireless access points installed because I got a better price on them then, and we looked, when I looked at the whole budget as a whole, we were good on every other cable replacement that was anticipated at the time, it was October, we had plenty of funds balance. So for that type of stuff, the department has, do have some discretion to figure out, as long as you're not going over, like, I wasn't able to do access points at seven thousand, if my budget was already spent, I'd say eighteen thousand of a twenty thousand dollar budget, 'cause I'd have been over budget, you know, so it's, there's a little bit of discretion in there for them to make those decisions if it's a repair or replacement.
I guess a good example would be a pickup truck that's budgeted in the CIP, and my rule of thumb is usually twenty-five thousand, so if it's under twenty-five thousand, I don't bring it to council if it's been budgeted for. Last year, our dehumanifier at the water plant broke down, I could have paid five thousand dollars to fix it, or we bought Hydras for twenty-five thousand to do both plants. I came to council to get approval for that, because it wasn't budgeted for, I could still probably fit it within my budget, but then I come to get approval just some direction. But anything that I have budgeted in, under, my rule, if it was under twenty-five grand, then I don't, I don't bring it to council because it's been priorly approved.
Okay.
No, like, salt, I mean, we have like, a yearly budget for that, right?
Yep.
But, I mean, if we get a bad winter and you go over that, you have to buy it anyway, but is, is that something where, you know, like, we can have that fund and the unused portion build in that fund? Or is that just part of the budget and it comes and goes every year?
That, that one you can't, that's just budgeted amount, we've been talking-
Consumables like, that you, you know, you go through aren't-
Yeah, unless you set up a salt fund.
Okay, which creates a lot more paperwork, which, yeah.
A good, another good example to that point is our, you know, our seal coating fund and our blacktop patch and our gravel roads aren't really, don't come from the taxpayers. Doesn't come from the general levies, comes from the state of Minnesota, they give us state aid dollars, three hundred and, almost four hundred thousand dollars a year. So, in talking with finance, we're actually gonna create a pavement management fund where this, that money goes into, so then we don't have to feel the need to spend it every year, and when Ryan does a good job getting bids and comes in fifty thousand under, that fifty grand can be used next year, or now we have fifty grand to do some concrete sidewalks, whatever. But working with finance, that kinda, that money is gonna go in its own little pot, so at the end of the year, if we don't use that, we can build it up, or if we have a mill and overlay and we need to get an extra block, well, we can take some money out of there and get that extra, see if we have a hundred thousand saved up in there to get a, you know, an extra half block. So I think for some of it, it works well, for some, it's, I mean, you're gonna create just a nightmare. I mean, you could set up a fund for every single line item and, it'd be a nightmare.
I think fuel is a good example of that. The prices of doing this and then right now are doing this.
Yeah.
We certainly have to have that figured in there, and, so. It's an unfunded, how do you, how do you have that on a line item?
You know, one of the things that we talked about simplifying some of the line items and micromanaging, but just breezing through some of the things, and I, maybe I read it wrong, but Dave, do we have certain equipment like mowers and stuff divided up between parks and public works? Or is it all public works?
Mostly it's-
I thought I saw something in there for like, purchase of a mower.
Yep, so the way the CIP is set up, it's, there's parks, streets, sewer and water, and stormwater, and then the airport as well, they're all kinda-
But it's all under public works, right?
Yeah, except for the sewer and water doesn't come out of the general fund, that comes out of enterprise, so that, that equipment or CIP is asked for through rate increases.
On that token, are utility rates where they should be for the enterprise fund?
No. We'll be having a discussion about with that.
That'll be a whole meeting.
That'll be definitely a whole meeting, we're actually meeting, they did a, a water, water survey in two thousand fourteen and kinda laid out what the cities should be doing, and then the recommended rate increases and what was recommended hasn't been done and the rate increases haven't been done, so now we're kinda reeval, gonna reevaluate here, and, yeah, that'll be a night to discuss just the enterprise funds, where we're sitting and where we're at.
Didn't Met Council come through with a, wasn't it, was it a ten or fifteen percent rate increase for sewer?
I'd have to verify that, but it sounds-
I know we had to raise it a, a good chunk just to cover Met Council.
Yeah, it's five, five percent just in CIP, and then another five percent just arbitrary, yeah. Our sewer fund is actually doing surprisingly well, and we, we gave it a good bump last year with the bonding for the lift station project, but out of the two, that's probably the healthiest of the two. But the water fund, we're, just in operations, we're running out of deficit.
Water fund's going dry.
Got plugged the leaks.
Any other questions on the budget process?
As to the budget process, I think there's, a, a, a lot of what I see of need is gonna be around timing on a lot of the CIP items, and so just looking through the CIP schedule, there's a lot of competing projects, and I think we're going to have to just kinda look at each one of those individually, and it's, to me, it's always helpful to line up what the expenses along with what other funding source, 'cause some of those have grant funds applied, some of them have their own separate revenue sources, and I think we're just gonna have to kind of look at those in total and evaluate what is the appetite for twenty nineteen, and what does that look like going forward, and help us make some decisions on where we need to place bets first. I'd say there's just some, some big numbers coming up, and it's gonna require us to make some prioritization decisions, so.
Yep.
All right.
I guess maybe in preparation, some of my request for staff would be to, you know, I think you're asking, what can you do to prepare? I guess make sure that list is as complete as possible. Even things like, you know, we talked about, the conversation came up with the squad, the computers in the squad cars, and those hadn't previously been on there, and so if we could just make sure we have as complete of a list as possible, then we can kind of line things up and start making some prioritizations.
And that's one thing that may kind of dovetails right into the next with the CIP update, you know, we haven't actually, you know, again, those worksheets were just sent out, you know, so it's, it's on there, so it's basically, again, we bring back kind of the nineteen twenty-three plan, you know, so you guys will kinda have the eighteen twenty-two plan as a reference, you kinda know what the eighteen twenty-two plan looked like, it was more, again, it was refresher course on there, but we will go through all those nineteen to twenty-three items and kind of show exactly that cost, what year it's gonna stagger in, what are the funding sources for that. One thing that we'll probably see on the nineteen to twenty-three that was not on the eighteen to twenty-two is I finally got from, at the end of last year, a list from Metro Inet of kind of what the technology infrastructure costing would be for this building. When this building was built, everything was brand-new, which is great, gives us about five to seven years' worth of activity. We've been in here for four years now, so we gotta start planning for, if we need to look at a server upgrade. I mean, I think wiring and some of that stuff is gonna last without an issue, however- Uh, however, we're starting to look at, you know, there's some switches, network switches that may need to get replaced, there may be some, you know. IT interface stuff back with Rosewood that we gotta replace, so just getting that stuff in the pipeline, so we're not all of a sudden hit with. You know, an IT budget that's, you know, twenty thousand, which includes, you know, expenses of computer replacement, monitor replacement, and. You throw like three network switches on there and you're probably at, you know, again ballpark, probably twenty-five thousand just for network switches, cause they are not. Inexpensive to get those replaced. Now, that being said, Rosewood has a very good job of making sure and they try to be as con- you know, as conscious of costs as possible. However, we're gonna start to see that demand of IT coming forward, so. I'm gonna start looking at getting kind of an IT, a rough IT list to get incorporated into, just sort of making plans for. If you need to do a network switch or a server or whatever.
All right. So, um, with the capital improvement. Couple of, just a couple of basic questions, but like the new grader we bought is on a lease. Right? Or did we buy it outright with a buyback?
Buy it, yeah, we, we purchased it with a guaranteed buyback and.
Guaranteed buyback, correct, okay. So how do we, I mean, how do we tra- uh, track that? Down the line to make sure that, you know, we, we get that. Turned quick enough, I mean, is there?
All up here, Ben.
All up there.
No, it's, it's, I mean, it's a placeholder in the, the CIP, I mean, I have it strung out, so it's. In that, that year, it's highlighted up there, you know, and then. Probably the year prior, it'll get brought up in the CIP, like, say if it's. So it's eighteen, so it'll be twenty-five, so in twenty-three, it'll be brought up that, just a reminder that twenty-five, that's that seven-year buyback of that grader, just. That that's a pretty solid number that's gonna have to happen to get that guaranteed money back.
Yeah, it seems like the best value by far to be able to do that anyways.
Yeah, cause if you skip a year, then they'll say, well, now it's only worth fifty grand to us, so, you know, tough luck, so I mean, you almost have to hit it on those times to get that.
They'll probably be itching to sell you a new one at seven years and come knock on your door anyway, right?
What was that?
They'll probably be itching to sell you a new one at seven years and come knocking on your door.
Yeah, exactly.
That's true.
And it gives you leverage too, I mean, if you know you can get, say, a hundred and fifty thousand back from Ziggler, you can put it on the open market too. And I mean, you could get a contractor that might say, okay, well, I'll give you a hundred and sixty-five thousand for it. I mean, it gives you that leverage, you know what you're guaranteed and you can't go below that, so it's worth shopping it as well.
And we're, um, at pay-as-you-go for almost everything now, but like the fire truck will be bonded for, correct, or is that?
Uh, that's included in the CIP, you know, so that's.
So we'll have.
We have cash available, yeah, that'll be a cash purchase, that will not be bonded for at this point, and then that's. You know, speaks to when we had that over, you know, that excess fund balance from seventeen. We allocated that out, that was allocated in there with the intention of, we knew there's a fire truck purchase coming in at, you know, five hundred and fifty thousand and that. Amount that was put into the capital improvement fund, you know, was enough to basically pay for that, so we don't need to bond for these large purchases and. The way this is set up, if we kinda maintain that, you know, putting money into that account every year and kinda taking a look at, we're putting in this much, this is what we have. You know, we can kind of allocate out these larger purchases without having to bond for them, so we're on track at this point for pay-as-you-go.
Okay. Any other questions? There's definitely some expenses there, so we need to, uh, review that before the budget comes along, but. I think it's a good start where we're at now. How does this end too? Or go ahead?
I'll try to bring back kind of, I mean, we kind of melded the last, you know, this budget process with the CIP kinda together, but I'll bring back kind of. Where we are, kind of an update at the next workshop, just to kinda say, here's what I was kinda looking at right now. I did talk to Hannah earlier this afternoon and just kinda said. You know, and she said it's a little early in the process to really start to put numbers out there, she wants to kinda see. She's still trying to do some year-end stuff for, for seventeen, and she said, once she clears that, she'll know kinda exactly where we are and where we can go, so. I'll start bringing hopefully back some preliminary numbers at the, at the June to start saying, here's kinda what we're looking at, but we're still a little early in the process.
Thanks, Dan. Chief Newman? Did the replacement update, engine two?
Okay, it's that time again where we're doing our annual maintenance of all of our fire trucks and. Last week during maintenance, uh, EAM, who's the company that we use to do the maintenance, discovered a. Twenty-four inch crack in the frame on our engine, uh, two, the one that's coming up for CIP replacement. Uh, next year, uh, because of the crack, uh, we took it out of service and EAM brought it to. Storm welding and manufacturing in Cologne, uh, one to determine if it would be, uh, fixable. And number two to determine what it costs to fix, if it would be. Uh, good news is I did get an email, uh, today from Storm Welding and they have two options for repair. Uh, one option is to, uh, take off the driver's side wheels, grind a V cut into the frame. And, uh, weld it, uh, that fixes nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. The owner of the company feels that we're probably gonna get a year and a half to two years out of that fix. Uh, he feels that the weld itself will stay intact, but will start to, um. Crack the frame on both sides of that weld, uh. Uh, both trucks were built nineteen ninety-seven and they've got, uh, rust jacking, uh, issues in the frame because it's a, uh. Turbular frame surrounded by a C frame, and so that, uh, salt and debris gets in there and it starts to rust and expands the frame. Or they break apart and you end up with, uh, horizontal cracks, uh, along the frame. I think Dan's gonna show a picture here.
I can remember and what it is.
The, uh, second fix, if we want a more permanent type of fix, is where they take off the entire. Box of the engine, take out the pump and actually put a clamp or a, or a, uh. Uh, well, the clamp over where the frame's cracked and that's about twenty thousand to fix, but. Uh, since this is coming up for CIP here, uh, in the next year. Uh, we're gonna move forward with the, uh, thousand dollar fix, it seems like a better.
Permanent type of fix is where they take, you got the entire box of the engine, take off the pump and actually put a.
My computer was feeding back and.
That was sort of ghost.
That was a.
No, I was at Memorex.
Quite the echo.
That was my audio, it didn't mute for some reason, so.
So there is some, uh, pictures of the actual cracked frame. It looks a little bit bigger than it actually is, but it is twenty-four, around twenty-four inches, um. And that's where that salt gets in between the, the two frame rails and starts to. Expand out.
You said that, uh, another truck's got the same chassis?
Well, back in nineteen ninety-seven, we purchased two identical trucks, we call them the twins. Uh, they're both engine tenders, carry twenty-five hundred gallons, as, uh. You're aware, only a small portion of Columbus, uh, and a small portion of Forest Lake have hydrants. And so when we, whenever we have a fire outside the hydrated area, we haul water to the, the scene, and so that's what those. Uh, two trucks' primary function is to haul water, but they're also backup engines, so. Uh, they were purchased in nineteen ninety-six when Rosenbauer was kinda going through growing pains. And they pretty much have been lemons from the day that we received them, so when this, uh, uh. Two trucks came up for CIP, we spread them out two years, so we wouldn't run into that issue again. I mean, Rosenbauer's been a great company to work with. Uh, but during this time, uh, they were going through growing pains, being bought out and expanding, and so. Uh, we just didn't have luck with those two vehicles.
Is the other truck still here?
Yeah, we have both of them, ones in Columbus, ones in Forest Lake.
Its frame still happy or are we having this too?
Uh, at this point, we haven't noticed any signs of rust jacking, uh, if you. Can you back up to that middle picture that showed right there? That's what the inside of the frame looks like, but we don't have any of that discoloration or, uh, metal fatigue that you see in the. Uh, the other picture, we haven't seen that yet. Uh, EAM, when they did annual service, they had noticed the rust jacking last year, but it hadn't cracked at that time.
Should, how long is the other truck gonna be holding on to? This one's getting replaced this year, the next one is two years old.
The next one is nineteen, so it's next year, and then it's two years after that, so twenty twenty-one would be the replacement on the second vehicle now. One of the things that I talked with Dan, you know, when we get this truck repaired and we're able to purchase another one, my recommendation would be to keep this truck. Kind of as a spare parts truck in case we lose a transmission, lose an engine, uh. We're able to take it from this truck and put it in the other truck. We're also be able to use, uh, the truck kind of as a training truck, um, until we replace that second one.
My thought on that is, should we do some, something preventative on the second one? Maybe get that frame blasted and sealed? Uh, so we don't end up having this again, is something, uh, you see should be done?
Yeah, I don't know what the, the cost versus, uh, reward for that is because, um. One, you don't know if it is gonna crack, you'd assume that you're potentially gonna have that issue, cause you had it in the first one. But at a thousand dollars to repair, should it crack? It might just be cheaper to wait to see if that happens. Uh, talking with the Stormmen or Storm Welding, they do a lot of welding on salt trucks as you'd expect. That's what they're hauling and it gets up in the frame and, um, he says this is actually fairly common. And fairly easy to fix, but you have to address that it's not DOT, uh, ru- roadworthy until you do.
Is there a happy medium gusset they might wanna stick in there?
I guess I don't know, I, I haven't addressed this, cause this is so new. And I've never, uh, experienced or ever worked with this in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, the two types of repair, will they have an impact on the, whatever value this truck may have when you do get rid of it?
Well, both trucks are gonna be, uh, first of all, being that you're twenty-two years old for one, and then you're gonna be at twenty-four years. For the other one, um, they're really not sellable for the fire service, uh. Both tanks in both trucks are cracked, one's cracked further than the other tank and we discussed that at the joint fire board and. Decided that it just wasn't worth fixing, uh, the tanks, and then on this, um. Engine two, we're gonna have to disclose that the, uh, frame was cracked and repaired. So you're probably looking at scrap value on one, and if it didn't have a cracked tank and it didn't. Uh, have a cracked frame, you're looking at ten thousand, maybe fifteen thousand, uh, for a premium to sell it, so. Scrap value with the one with the cracked tank in the frame and maybe ten thousand for the other one. Is all you're gonna get for trucks that are this age.
Yep.
Yeah, I doubt you'd even get that for them, I mean, they're just not much of a use for.
I agree. You know, NFPA only allows you to have those trucks, now it's not a, you know, hard and fast go-to-jail type rule. But they're saying twenty years on an, uh, engine, so we're, we've exceeded that and there's. You know, a lot of smaller departments up north that just don't have the funds to replace engines that are probably farther ahead than, uh, we are. Uh, or further behind, uh, but then you start getting into reliability issues and repair expense, so. There, there's a point where it, it doesn't make sense to keep sinking money into these vehicles.
So Chief, this, this vehicle is down at the repair center now?
It's down at Cologne at, uh, Storm Welding and Manufacturing.
How quick can they get it back to us?
Uh, I gave them the okay to move forward with that repair today and we should have it back by Wednesday, Thursday at the latest.
I think that's, you know, part of the importance of having it here, maybe it would cost a few more dollars to get, you know. Salt trucks one thing, but the fire truck, I'd like to expedite the repair on it anyway.
Yeah, it would be devastating if that truck couldn't be repaired, because it is one of, it's thirty-three percent of our engine force. That would change a lot of tactics, tactics around, and then all the fire prevention. Things that we use these engines for, we just wouldn't be able to pull it out of service to do that.
So, um. I think what you recommended is, is a really good idea, but I guess one thing is, are we gonna have somebody designated to. Watch both of these vehicles, um, in case they do develop cracks, I mean, is, is there a way? Every time they're used that, you know, they can be checked easily, I guess, I'd, I'd rather, you know.
We're gonna add that to our annual monthly maintenance, so the engineers come in each month and they go through their trucks. And they go through check batteries, fluids, um, all your tools, the electrical equipment on there, uh, they do system trucks and then we'll add. Uh, a full check for the frame to make sure that we're not.
Or at least at the stress point where it's at.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, you know, this could have been there for almost a year with.
Yeah.
Without it being found anyways, so.
Yep.
All right.
I think just one point of clarification on that is, you know, part of this conversation, I think we, we got lucky and we were able to get, you know, this truck repaired at a reasonable. You know, rate, I think when this originally was kind of brought forward, you know, the repair estimates were anywhere between twenty and fifty thousand dollars, because you just didn't know if they could even repair the frame. You know, was the first issue, and if it did, you had to take everything off the truck to do it, basically rebuild it, so. You know, I, I think we got extremely lucky that the repair is gonna be right around a thousand dollars, you know, to do, but I think that it's kind of dovetails into a larger conversation in terms of. We have an engine that's, or in the CIP for nineteen, you know, for discussion, well, it's part of, and, and Chief Newman can kind of. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like when you authorize, you know, purchase of a truck or you order one through Rosenbauer, they do require a down payment to basically start that process. So with the original intent of starting that process in nineteen, it could take up to a year, two, year and a half for them, from the time you place the order for that truck to be ready to come into service. So, part of what we had kinda had a conversation about, is there a way for us to kind of front-load the, the design work of the, cause there's. Kind of internally, he needs, or the fire department needs to go through and say, what do they want in the next engine, what are the design components, kinda look through and do all that kind of. You know, front-end work to make sure they're getting the right vehicle, the right piece of equipment that'll last them for the next twenty years. Um, I think originally Chief Newman had talked about doing that work kind of later on in, in eighteen and with preparation for bringing in the down payment in nineteen. However, kinda given this new set of circumstances, how we're kind of are on some aspect, a little bit on borrowed time with this frame repair. I mean, I think we'll be okay, you know, in, in talking with the repair shop, I think this'll bridge us to when the new truck arrives. There's been some discussion points of kind of fast-tracking that design work on the fire department side. Which could potentially have the design work done in eighteen and allowing us to get that order placed with Rosenbauer by the end, before nineteen. My advice would be anything we can do to kind of expedite that process could help get that truck in service here in Fort, in, in the city. Earlier, you know, cause if you can get, catch them at a window, you could save some time on delivery. The, the issue kinda becomes, or, you know, I guess the, kinda the temperature of the council at this point is, how comfortable would you be if we. Front-loaded the design work, got everything done and Rosenbauer wanted to advance the half-down payment into eighteen versus. So we could just slide the CIP from nineteen into eighteen.
Um, actually, uh, you'd go through that building phase, uh, which would take a couple of months to decide what you'd want in the truck. You'd order the cabin chassis and that takes six months to deliver, and at that time, then the down payment would do, so this would be all in nineteen.
All nineteen, okay, so that was new.
New information I had got, so.
Disregard what I just said, I never, I never said that was old information, so.
Yeah, when it, when it impact, uh, twenty eighteen budget, uh, it's something that we were gonna bring up to the joint fire board to get this process, I don't wanna get the. The cart before the horse, uh, was to just verify that this is something that the council wants to move forward with on nineteen. And then, uh, if it is, then we'll start putting together that truck committee and. And fast-track that, cause, you know, everybody that's on the department's all paid on call, so. To put that committee and put all those hours together to come up with the design and build, uh. We don't wanna do that until we're for sure that we're probably gonna move forward with the CIP purchase.
At least. When it comes to the fire equipment, I know it's specialized, but are there more than one company that you bid against, or how does that work?
Yes, you put it out to bid, you basically will spec out, you know, what cabin chassis you want. And then what you're looking for, a pump capabilities, equipment, and then you would send it out to the four or five, uh. Main builders, and then they would come in and basically do sealed bids, you'd open them, open them up and. Uh, then whatever lowest bid or, um. The company that's capable of building what you're looking for, they would get the award, and at that point, then you'd order that cabin chassis, that's about six months out. And it's about six months to build, so typically, uh, your, uh, truck committee takes about six months to. Call different manufacturers. So typically, uh your uh truck committee takes about six months to call different manufacturers, research everything and come up with a plan. We kinda wanna put all the hours together pretty quickly and try to cut that down to two or three months instead of six months.
So I, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Uh to me, twenty years seems like a too long a time to have something as valuable as a fire truck. I mean, our police cars are in and out of here in three years. So do they have programs, buybacks, guarantee, you know, anything to where maybe, you know, this vehicle would then go to. A smaller city department that doesn't have the budget we do, so we could have newer, more modern equipment? Maybe every eight or ten years instead of twenty or twenty-four years to replace something like this?
I'm not really aware of any programs like that. Most departments, when they purchase a truck, will use it right out to the end of the life cycle. Uh you know, obviously with like department like Saint Paul or Minneapolis that are running a ton of different runs. They don't get the twenty years out of a, a vehicle. Smaller departments like ours, we normally do. Um these two trucks have just not been great trucks from the start. Had they uh not had all the issues they had, we'd probably get even a couple more years out of them. Uh we're very good with our maintenance. We keep up with uh annual maintenance plus monthly maintenance. And that does make a difference when you look at the, the expense and maintenance from the other trucks that we have. Uh these two are just expensive to, to maintain. So I, I hear what you're saying. It, it sounds like a good plan. It'd be nice to have a newer truck uh less than every twenty years. But I'm just not aware of any programs that are out there. I can ask a couple of the manufacturers if they're aware of that.
I mean, it, it would be nice to be able to, I, I guess both of these trucks are vital. There's no question about that. And for both of them to be in that twenty-plus year range. And yes, we have to replace them, but we're gonna be in that same position twenty years down the road. And it would be nice to have them every eight or ten years or, you know, have that spread out so that, you know, you're, you know, we've got a fresher truck available. Um we need to look at that or, you know, I suppose even, now you have different designations and this one's an engine tender. Uh I don't know how that, I don't need to know how that works in there right now, but you know, if this is where we need to be in the future. I mean, obviously you got more calls than ever, but less calls for fire and more for rescue. So, you know, evaluating that equipment and making sure we have the right equipment, um I think is, is part of that too. Because I'm sure you're gonna be needing to add something with the amount of calls we're getting. Um and then just last point was, you know, learn from our mistakes, but um you know, this truck is rusting underneath, you know. There's not gonna be any changes coming up in the future, so if this frame on the next trucks can be galvanized or stainless steel, if, if it's an option. But um you know, something to help with that corrosion, but I'm just as concerned about electronics. There's more and more electronics on these things and computers and everything else and they're not gonna hold up for twenty years. I just, you know, there's gonna be issues going down the line with, with all that type of stuff, so.
Yeah, are these trucks, are you at capacity weight-wise? Can you get a bigger tanker or not?
That's about capacity for uh those trucks. If you, if you start getting into uh bigger tankers, you get into uh length issues. And getting in to uh tighter driveways becomes a bigger issue.
Now, it's awesome to get it fixed for pretty affordably. I just think about the safety aspect on that one. Uh working with metal myself, I understand that when you stress an area, that breaks, not the only weak point.
Mm-hmm.
Um kind of along the lines of earlier replacement, do you, do we currently go through any refurbishment? Or move a body on a new new cabin chassis halfway through the life and have it refurbished? Is that something we're doing or might be hubus?
We actually have. We have an uh nineteen eighty-five uh Ford nine thousand, which is uh just a tender by itself. That's in Columbus. We did a full body off restoration uh eight or ten years ago. And that truck's still in service and I would expect that truck to be in service probably for another ten years, even though it's nineteen eighty-five. I think it cost us eleven hundred dollars for annual uh maintenance and service last year. So it is actually our least expensive truck and probably the most reliable, no electronics. Uh but it doesn't run very many miles a year, uh because for that to get on the road, uh you've gotta have, you know, have a pretty big need for it. And uh the other two twins that we're looking at replacing, they had a full body off restoration, I think, five years ago. And it start, they're starting to uh rust through uh in some of the areas that were just repaired not too many years ago. So we actually do go through that process to try to extend the life of the vehicle.
Uh if you have mutual aid calls, would these be some of the trucks that would go out, or what usually goes out on a mutual aid?
All depends on what the mutual aid call is. If it's a large structure fire, uh forty-one twenty-seven or tender one out of Columbus, that does go out for those. Uh we try not to empty all the trucks out of our area, so we still have coverage in Forest Lake. But typically a uh tender engine and then a tender if it's a very large fire. And then uh we'll send out the airboat on some brush trucks if it's a grass fire. Uh so it all depends on, on what the call is. But I, I heard somebody had mentioned about, you know, buying the right trucks. One of the things that we're looking at is uh forty-one twenty, which is our rescue squad. With the increase in vehicle accidents, medical calls, that's a command center vehicle, so it's fairly large. So when we're running medicals, you know, for a lift assist, we're sending that truck out. And so they, what a lot of departments have done is they started going with a smaller uh pretty much utility, utility vehicle. It's built on a one-ton or a four-fifty frame with a box. And they put their extrication tools in that and their medical tools out on that. And so their heavy rescues, you know, that run around five hundred thousand dollars to replace. They can buy a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar pickup truck type vehicle. And they're running those on the majority of the smaller type calls to extend the life of that rescue squad. Uh considerable amount of time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, makes sense. Any other questions for the chief? All right.
Good job, Al.
Thanks.
Yeah. All right, um moving on to nine, other. Got a couple of things, and maybe Dave, this is more for you than anything, but um been getting complaints about. Uh significantly increased traffic on some of our dirt roads due to road construction. And can we put calcium chloride down or whatever the mixture is? And it's not in our budget, but I don't know if staff wants any feedback on that or if we can get pricing. Or see if there are some roads that uh, you know, definitely would benefit from it?
Pricewise, it's about three bucks a gallon and you, uh you apply it at whatever, point three gallons per square foot. So about forty-three hundred to five thousand per mile.
Okay.
So a country, country block is five grand a slot.
And that's?
Per time?
Per time.
Application, how long does that treatment last?
Depends on when you apply your first one. If you apply it later on, you can maybe get away with one, but typically two. You'd do one in May and then one in, you know, August, early August.
Right, I got uh.
Per mile, right, and that's per mile?
So for the, the city, if you figure thirty miles, it'd be about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per application if you did all the gravel roads.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just talking, you know, a couple of them that uh are seeing a lot of.
You just want people to really call me, don't you? Why did you, why did you spray Elmcrest and not my road?
I got a secondary email. I didn't get the initial one, though I asked for it. How many miles of road are we talking here uh that you were getting complaints about?
I'd have to add it up, but five mile, ten miles probably would be having to deal with.
Your major complaints are Elmcrest, Fenway, one-eightieth, one-ninetieth, Harrow, Heath. It's about your ones right there, those chunks.
Are, are all of those, are there restrictions because of um watershed requirements in any of those areas? Are there any, all of them are eligible for it?
Not for calcium chloride, cause that doesn't, it doesn't run off. You blend it in when you, it sticks to the gravel.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um just kinda curious if we could put this in a line item for uh change order on any ongoing projects, maybe?
I definitely see the, the benefit, uh I mean, the heavily traveled roads, but also, I mean, if you're gonna throw three hundred thousand dollars a year at keeping the dust down. I'd rather throw three hundred thousand at double chip sealing and knock out three miles of gravel roads and double chip sealing. Then those three miles are good for six years without really any maintenance. I mean, I think there's a, maybe a part calcium chloride and a part, yeah, we're gonna increase. I mean, cause that double chip seal in that forest road has held up great. There's a couple, couple potholes that we're gonna patch in. And I mean, we made it through a whole winter. I think that's, if I were to be spending the money, if it was my, if it was my money, I would spend it on the double chip seal.
Would you wanna focus on chip sealing, maybe these roads that are gonna be beat up uh just cause of the project construction?
Yeah, and I mean, even the double chip, so one-ninetieth, I mean, basically we'll have it from Harrow all the way to sixty-one and now sixty-one, almost to Fenway, cause there'll be millions in there. So all that'll be double chip sealed now. So I mean, kinda what we're doing, this double chip sealing is, is going in these places as well. And we, we're coming up on Harrow from one-eightieth up through those two curves. So we're, we're kind of systematically attacking these roads that we get the complaints on, you know?
That system does work well, no question about it.
True.
How long does it take them to do the process? Not that it should prohibit us, but you know, if you're shutting down somebody's alternative route?
To do the calcium chloride or the double chip seal?
Double chip seal.
They just do one lane at a time, just like blacktop, and so they'll spray one side and chip it and then open it up and then spray the other side. So you shut down a lane, basically closing a lane off for however long they go. You'll, I'll have to give you the, the contact. It'll be, if you ever wanna come out and see it this year when they're doing it. It's uh, it's pretty neat to watch them do it. It's pretty fast and it's amazing how hard it, you know, how set up it gets almost immediately.
Well, that's good. Does Ryan able to score any regrind from the project?
Uh it's on the radar, but um they don't have any that they're not already reusing in their own. They're using it for basing, I think, for the bridge and things like that right now, so.
Contractors don't like it too when we tell them our, our road projects, we don't wanna give it up either. It's a hot commodity. I mean, it's, it's worth.
But you're creating some anyways, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, not as much on these two projects, cause the road is so gone on the northwest part and then Hayward that we can't pull straight millions. We're just reclaiming the road and it'll be like a, a blend, you know, a fifty-fifty blend, which is better than nothing, but. But it's a, I mean, they used to just throw it away. I mean, they tear up a road and just discard it thinking it wasn't worth anything. And now, I mean, they'll dump it back in and make new roads with it, plus use it for base. I mean, it's, it's a, a hot commodity.
Been working out well.
Yep.
All right. Uh last question for me, um at the airport, I seen they were mowing and what's the schedule? I mean, along the runway obviously needs to get mowed more than others. Is there, is, or do they just mow everything at once, or how is that done?
Typically, once a week, once a week until July and then slows down, then it's once every ten days to two weeks.
So we're mowing the entire airport like that?
Yeah.
Seems like, uh, I don't know, it's, is there a way we can adjust that to where, you know, around the runways gets mowed? But the others, we can leave it a little bit taller, so we're not putting that many hours in mowing?
The pro, I guess the only downside is if you let it go, then you have to use different equipment to try to cut that other stuff down. You know, if you stay up with your progressive and your ground master, you're constantly mowing it that three inches. If you let it grow up to a foot, then you, you can't use those mowers anymore to knock it down, so you're changing.
Could be hater something though if they needed to or.
That, that could be a conversation the airport commission could have with, with tailors and see if there's any other land there that they would like to, to crop. I mean, that's completely fine.
Don't for safety reasons? You wanna keep that uh not attractive to wildlife?
Right, that's part of it, but uh.
Part of just safety.
Yeah, it's just a safety thing too for running, but I would, I'd have to agree. It seems to me that if you kinda let it go, you're, it's just gonna make it tougher the next time to do it, you know? It, but it costs you more even. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I'm asking. I, you know, I understand mowing parks on a weekly schedule, but you know, there's, there's no activity. I mean, the, the runways are there, but you know, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a pilot. I don't know. That's why I'm asking the questions.
Fair question.
Um I would just think if we could save, you know, ten hours a week or whatever.
Yeah, the, the one thing I, I just wanna make sure, Dave, that, you know, any of the lots there, the hangars and that area, we should, the city should not be mowing any of that. I mean, that's all up to the individual lot owners or whatever you wanna call them. And uh I think the airport commission should send letters out to make sure that everybody's doing that part of it. Cause they are re- responsible for their own lots.
Is that true of the commercials? No, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Cause Jim was kinda complaining though. We're not maintaining it around the hangar.
Well, I think he's more concerned about just being able to get in and out of the hangar, you know, that kinda thing. Those individual lots, we gotta make sure that the city isn't spending time doing that.
Yeah, it's just been past practice that they just kinda, I mean, before, a lot of them weren't purchased, you know, or they weren't.
Right.
So we just kinda swung in and mowed all them and if they're all purchased on it, we can.
Well, they're all spoken for enough, so.
Positive note, we almost got the whole center molded. I don't know if you've been out there lately, the, the center of the airport in between the runway and the taxiway. Yeah, almost all but mowed down now, so that's, it dried out. That's a positive.
How's the new mower?
Hmm?
How's the new mower?
Very nice. We shaved uh about six hours of mow off of the medians. And we'll probably shave about a half a day out at the airport. So gaining ten hours, ten hours a week, gaining it back, so that'll be.
Excellent.
Was able to talk to one of your operators at Big Rig Day. He said it sure was nice, so.
Yeah.
It's good to hear.
Yeah, it cuts some grass and it doesn't slow down either that progressive that we have. You get wet grass and it'll just bog. This one will just power right through it.
Those hydras have torque.
Hmm?
Those hydras have torque.
Yeah, they do.
All right. Anything else to bring up at the workshop? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You adjourn.